Statement for the State Board. Mission of the Kansas State Board of Education is to prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous, quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. Our vision is for Kansas to lead the world in the success of each student. If you please join with me now in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All Board members are present. Thank you. At this time, we'll approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to today's agenda? If there are no changes, may I have a motion to approve the July 12th agenda as presented? So moved by Deena and seconded by Kathy Horst. Kathy Horst. Kathy Bush. I'm getting there. I'm getting there. Just wanted to see if you guys are awake. We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Are you opposed, Steve? Opposed. Okay. It's a 9-1 vote. Steve Roberts opposed to the agenda. At this time, we'd like to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes from the State Board meeting in June? If not, may I have a motion? Moved by Janet Waugh, seconded by Carolyn Campbell. All those who are in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on our agenda is the report from our Commissioner. Good morning, Randy, and welcome.
Happy July. And good to see all of you. You know, as an update, I guess the best news in the last 30 days is that we're going to open school on time. And so, yeah, thanks to a lot of people made that happen, but we're grateful for that and certainly marching on with that. Also, I've been out to many places. The opportunity to see Sally Cobble a couple of times in the last couple of weeks at Mead and Weskin. And so Sally, thank you for coming out for those. And I want to, I'll emphasize this, Janet even today. You know, we have, we're trying to get out a cohesive message. And we've looked at the data, and you've issued a new vision and some outcomes for education. And I want to make it clear that as we talk about these social-emotional factors and, you know, the soft skills, those intangibles, we are not saying academic skills are not important. They're very important. But what Kansas told us is that we were out of balance with that and that we need to kind of put that in balance for the whole child. So I think, you know, sometimes you go around and you may hear, well, academic skills are not important, or, you know, or math skills are not important. No, they are important, but they're important in context to how we help every kid be successful. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to help clear that up. So I've been saying this for a while, you know, I've kind of looked at this, that when we hit the annual conference in October, that will be kind of the one-year watershed is the way I look at it. We launched the vision at that conference, and we'll have worked on that for a calendar year come October. So today, I want to tell you that the easy work's over. If you hadn't thought about it, we got the data, we created the vision, we've been out, we've been trying to explain to people what that means, the outcomes, and how we're going to go, and now the easy part's over. It's like the bond issue. We worked really hard, and now we got to deliver it. We got to measure it. We got, you know, we got to have timelines and et cetera. So what I have asked, I asked the Chief School Officer Organization, CCSSO, is the organization of all the chief schools, if they would come in and do a capacity review for our agency to look at a couple of things. A, are we in a position to deliver your vision and make that happen? And B, what recommendations would they have to enhance the likelihood we could carry that out? And what, in a nutshell, before I go over the details, which I'm going to with you today, what we're trying to do in a big sense is really tighten the relationship that the State Board has with the State Department, that your wishes and your outcomes and your vision become our organization to really carry that out, so that it's seen as we're all moving in the same, in the same, in the same direction. And as we get into the real details and the systematic part of it, you know, Sally was, and I had a brief conversation in Weskin yesterday about graduation rates and not counting GEDs. You know, there are going to be hundreds or maybe thousands of those little points, and we want to make sure that we're both in concert with each other, you know, as we move this, this thing forward and really try to lead the world as we go forward. So I'm going to highlight some of the things that you have in front of you. I'm not going to go over every one of those slides, but I wanted to highlight some things. And Wendy has broken out some popcorn today for many people that came in and helped contribute to this work. So CCSSO brought in a team of four people, five people, I'm sorry, and they were going to help us determine our current capacity to achieve the goals that you have laid out and then, and how we should be organized to do that. So in order to gather data, they spent a couple of days, they talked to you, many of you joined by conference call, they talked to USA, leadership at USA, leadership KNEA, leadership at KASB, and then they spent a great deal of time with our leadership team, the directors in the, in the organization. They then did some focus groups with, you can see the representatives from the various departments within the agency. So all together, they talked to over 100 people, both internal and external, to ascertain as simple as, do people understand that you have a new vision? Do people understand their new outcomes? And what depth and what level do they understand that? And then where do they perceive that we are strong, you know, as we move forward? And where do they perceive as their opportunities for growth? And what are the next steps? So I'd like to go over with you snapshot. I gave you in your handout, slide by slide, detail by detail, and certainly be happy to respond to that. But basically, they were looking for a framework to say, do you have a foundation that's solid within the agency and solid outside of the agency to deliver this? Two, do you understand how hard this is going to be? I mean, that's, that's in essence what the second is. Three, how are you going to deliver this systematically and know when you achieve it? And how are you going to drive it? And then five, how do you create this culture then of this is what Kansas is going to, going to be like? And so, you know, as, as we've been moving forward this year, it's been explaining the changes that are going to happen from a no child left behind system to a new State Board vision and outcome system. And as I told all of you, I know that it seems like you've been everywhere, right? Talking about it. I think the same thing. And then inevitably comes up and someone says, what are you talking about? Never even heard of that. So we know we still have work to do on this front, even as we move forward. But I wanted to just get to the four key areas that they're saying, here's your next step, here's your focus of work for the next several months. And it really will be our focus between today and when we launch that second year in October, if you would. That's where we're going to have the details of this worked out. So first, plan for the development now of this vision. They recommend creating an implementation plan for the Kansas Can vision that identifies cross-sector teams in KSDE and outside of KSDE with each of the goals and who's invested in that work. This was interesting, I thought, to me, and you may find it interesting to you. You know, we have a wide variety of activities and departments within our agency, and I'll give you one of the, a large one, which is, that we'll hear from later on today, and it's Child Nutrition and Wellness. And that's a federally funded, for the most part, program to give breakfast and lunch to students. And then we have, you know, auditors, and we have IT people, and we have people that aren't out in schools a lot doing some of the work. And what the group that came in said, staff at KSDE want to be involved in the vision, even if it's not their primary role. They want to be on some of these cross-division teams. They see themselves as a family, and they like to be vision and mission driven. And so, please ask them to be a part. And so, we're going to create cross-division teams that, for example, Tammy Mitchell may be one of the people in charge of kindergarten readiness, but maybe we have someone for Nutrition and Wellness on that team that's, that's doing some work with it. So one of the things that we're going to be doing as a leadership team is allowing any of our staff members in any of our departments to be a part of any of the five outcomes. They can volunteer to do work on any of those five outcomes, should they so desire and have a passion for working on that. So that, I thought that was just instructive as we work on cross-sector teams. That will also need to involve our external stakeholders, you know, teachers and principals and KASB and, and those also. So those are going to be part of our cross-sector teams to make sure that our external communication is also taking place. And then within that, we're going to, key objectives and action steps, you know, these are, these are nothing more than smart goals and strategic planning. Method for those teams to evaluate and report progress. You'll see some of that tomorrow when we unveil for the first time with you what it would mean to lead the world in graduation. It means we have to beat Portugal, by the way. I'll give you a little hint, because they're leading the world right now. But, but a method for our team to evaluate, report that progress, targets, trajectories, interim measures for progress as we do this, that will be ready for you come October. That's an ambitious, but that, that's where we're going to work from now until we get ready for the second year, and that is the strategic plan, the goal-setting, you know, very detailed action plans that you're going to get a part, be, see and be a part of so that you can give feedback to, Janet can say, Randy, I wasn't what I was thinking when we did that. And then we can readjust course, because that's how we've got to link that together, the work that you have done and set forth to what the work that the agency has to go through to carry out, to do it. Second area, organizational structure. They said, consider adding a position basically called Chief of Staff to assist me when I am out of the agency in making sure that the agency is, you know, running related to that vision. Now, I don't know if, if, if any of you have noticed, but the department's budget is not increasing. I don't know if, did you, if you noticed that, but I'd point that out, that in many ways, we're decreasing. So, but, you know, that's one of the things I will consider, and we'd have to, we'd have to do some reorganization over time. Don't know exactly, you know, if we will do that or what it will look like, but that is one of the recommendations to do. Create opportunities, again, with our staff to share departmental roles, priorities with other divisions, recognizing that increased inter-agency dialogue will be critical. So as, as Colleen's team with early childhood and special education and other factors, how do we get that shared with other teams and what they're doing on a, on a more systematic basis? The directors share really well, and the assistant directors share really well, but oftentimes the workers are doing that work, and they may, you know, just not know what the other people are doing in the agency. And the agency personnel said, we want to know. We want, we do want to know more. So we're working on what that structure would look like to make sure that we're communicating that better. Communication then. Emphasize quarterly meetings as a place to build investment and progress in the Kansas Can plan. We currently have agency briefings every quarter, and they're held over next door in the auditorium. And we recognize people maybe have been with us for 10 years, and we go through some things. They recommend that those quarterly meetings be more focused on those cross-agency teams and then the reporting out and the dialogue back and forth about what those teams are doing so people have a chance to question it, people have a chance to, to, to be engaged with it. One of our problems in implementing that will simply be a physical facility that we can house everyone. You know, we couldn't hold everyone here in the agency. We can put them in the auditorium. That's not very conducive to working in teams and working around, so we're looking at how we can do that. And right now, not everyone goes to those agency briefings. And then, of course, we have people out in the field, our auditors, and again, our child nutrition people, and other people would be out in the field at any given time. So we're, we're focused on that. I've asked our leadership team at our next meeting to come back with some ideas of how we can, we can make that better in this sense. To conduct some weekly rounds with me and visit with staff, share both the vision and understand their work, their specific work, any concerns that they have about that work. So I've been working with Penny about some organizational structures that will allow me to do that better. One of the things, and Penny points this out to me, I, you know, I wasn't employed in the department when we were over on 10th Street, but often, those that were here say, you know, it was a little bit easier to be a family, but the whole building was the department, and it was closer. Now we're spread out from here, you know, to the sixth floor and, you know, across, and it's not just our building. And so that has created, I think, for some of the veteran people, a little bit of a disconnect just in how they even see each other sometimes during that work. So we're going to, I'm going to try to, I will do better in that sense and, and making sure that, that everyone sees their work as coordinated. And then a coordinated communication system to better ensure that consistent messages are delivered from leaders to KSDE staff. This is everything from the branding, you know, your Twitter messages and your Facebook messages to listserv things, you know. Oftentimes, we're blasting things from certain departments and regulation, and the other people don't even know those are coming out till they read them too. So how do we better communicate that? And finally, organizational effectiveness. How can we create repeatable practices that define routines relative to communication and problem solving? And they recommend that Scott Gordon could probably take the lead in that area. Those, again, you would think it would be really simple, but we might have a field, someone out in the field that rarely even comes to Topeka to work, that creates a webpage, that creates a Facebook page, that creates a Twitter logo, and wants to communicate in that, what they're doing, and there's no one else even knowing that's occurring. Our communications office doesn't know. And that, that's not negative. It's just, you know, the nature of people wanting to do really, but what happens, what they're saying is, the message becomes disjointed then, and people hear slightly different messages. So we're going to try to coordinate that better. And then finally, provide agency-wide guidance scenarios of staff support, such as better orientation, more professional learning opportunities for our staff, and working conditions. So I don't know if that includes, they probably would like to have a raise sometime in their lifetime, but we'll, I don't know about that. I gave you the little bit more detailed report of what they gave, but those are the recommendations. And I think that they did a really good job for us. Wendy Fritz is going to be leading, you know, the, the capacity and looking at that from an HR perspective. She'll be kind of heading this for me. And, but we are serious about the capacity of our agency and changing our agency to drive your vision and your outcomes. And, you know, we're, we're serious about getting that done. And so this is, this is really the first major step of having someone else with us, with a different set of eyes, come in and give us some recommendations. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
First of all, thank you for, for having the group commence CCSSO to do this. It, even if we weren't doing the vision, it would be, it would have been a good review to carry out, because obviously, it supports the vision, but it also enhances the services and inner services of the, of the department within themselves as well as to their customers who are out in the state. So yes, I, it's great, it's great we did this. Now, my question would be, now we have this template, a year from now, we should evaluate or six months, how's it going?
That's exactly right. This is, this is your roadmap for how are we doing? And that's why by October, you will have the detailed strategic details of each of those outcomes, and how we plan to achieve them, what are the benchmarks and the people that are involved, and we can have a robust discussion then about that second year now in terms of the implementation of this. And again, and it still won't stop us from having to have some conversations with people about, yes, we have a new vision. Yes, we have some outcomes, but we can start to move, you know, the field and how, you know, those, those specific questions that you're getting too, how we're going to go about doing.
Organizationally, right here in KSDE and those people who work for us across the state, you know, that we have a consistent message, you know, related to our vision. You know, we have to all know it and agree that that's the direction we want to go. Any questions? Sally Cobble?
Thank you. Great report. In, in the information that you got back, did they ever make a comment about capacity? Do we have the workforce that we need? Do we have the right workforce? Do they share any of that with you? Or, you know, I keep thinking, do we have the right people on the bus in the right seats?
Yeah. They gave us a little bit of that, Sally. I thought I would actually get a little bit more, and what they said is that that'll be a little bit of a second phase for them as they compare similar states of similar size. But what was interesting in, two of the five people that were here were former chiefs in South Dakota and Maine, which are small states. And, and they said, in some ways, we had some advantages over the way that they had it in those two, a little bit smaller states. So, but we're going to have to look at that, because what, what's occurred over time is, we, we may scale up something because of large grant money. And then when the grant money goes away, then you're, you know, you're, you're out of balance, or you, how do you fund that? And what's, what's occurring in our department, and I don't know if this is true of every state, is that if you're in an area in our agency that is federally funded, you tend to have more money than in those areas that are state-funded. I mean, you have more chances for professional development, you have more chances because there's, there's a greater amount of money, I guess, per, so, and as people have left and we're tightening the state dollars, we tend, in many cases, not to fill the position or ask ourselves, should we just hold that position open? What happens over time is your, your organization can get out of balance to your mission and vision. And that, we'll get a little bit better picture of that as we start to, to look at that across the board. But I want to make it clear, because I know how messages can be misconstrued. This is not about, we're going to go fire a bunch of people, right, and shift them. It's, it's how do we move, we may have to move people a little bit, repurpose them, or maybe not, you know, as we go forward. And one of the things I thought was interesting is the former chief of South Dakota, when he came into our leadership team, said very quietly before he started, now how many of these people did you bring with you? I said, I didn't bring any of these people with me. They were here. And he was shocked, well, why didn't you bring your own people with you? And I said, because I'm not looking upon this as a quick fix. This is a long-term change. We have good people. They've been doing good work. We have a new vision. I think they can be adapted to that. There's no indication that they can't. And, you know, I, we don't need to just have an upheaval so that we can try to generate some quick results in a year that maybe aren't sustaining. And we want this, we want this change to be sustaining for Kansas as we move forward. So I don't know, I hope I answered your questions, Sally.
That's a great statement, Randy, because what you're saying is that you, you don't have a political position. You're there, and the department's there for the good of the kids and the good of the schools. And so, most of those positions that bring people with them are, tend to be a little political and that, and so I, I admire you for, for standing on that. Thank you very much.
Ken Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question and then kind of another question. First, what State Board members were involved in this?
I'd have to get, I gave it to Wendy to curate.
We're curious. Those that were involved, raise their hands, I guess. You know, that's a good question, Ken.
Those with popcorn.
Sure, go ahead. It was, it was be, all of you, I mean, or any of, it wasn't to be a selected group. I, that, that was my understanding, but again, I, I did not, I removed myself from the process, so I don't know even Mark Tomlin or, there were other people contacted, but I didn't do the contacting. So I would.
I came to the office just because I thought it was a shame to live here in Topeka and have them come across country. So, but I, I had made an assumption, which is a mistake, that everybody was invited.
I also think that somebody that was helping us coordinate that thought that our emails were set up already on the department level, and then sent them out to us the night before it happened also. Yeah, it would.
Well, actually, it was kind of a last-minute thing. It wasn't, and part of that was my fault. And Wendy put it together, and we had to have, we couldn't have everybody, but we did have that. Sorry you weren't there.
Thing is, when they want to contact us in the department, really the best way to do it is to go through Peggy, because she does know how to get ahold of all of us. And that's kind of one of those things that kind of came up.
That's exactly it. So we, we know that, right? I know that. Wendy didn't know that, that the best way to do that would have just simply gone through Peggy. And I think there was some communication breakdown, unfortunately.
My thought, I guess, maybe it's not a question, is that I think it's often good to get outside input, guidance for this kind of big effort. But my thinking is that what we've said about, nobody else has done. So I'm not sure, I want to be sure that as we move forward, we're not, we're not tied to some sort of framework put together by somebody who doesn't know what's going on, doesn't understand it. This is our vision, not anybody else's. And I'm, I guess, that's, that's enough said. I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to be relying on experts to show us how to do this. We're tired of that. Personally, I'm tired of that. I'd like to do it right and not because it meets somebody else's criteria.
Thank you. I, I think what they've tried to do is give us a framework, Ken, for this, and certainly it is going to be our work. And I think you're going to see that when we kind of come with large amounts of data for you in, in October.
Well, thank you very much, Randy. I look forward to October once again. I know, and real work is about to begin. real work is about to begin. Okay. We have no one for the citizens' open forum. Is that right?
That's the first time.
Surprising.
Well, That'll be good because we have a large item.
Well, I, I, I This is the first time since I've been chair that we haven't had guests come before us and citizens and speak. But within that, it is, I now declare the citizens' open forum of the Kansas State Board of Education meeting, open at 10:32. At 10:32, the state board provides this opportunity for citizens to share their views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the state board. The state board asks that speakers identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent, if applicable. The state board also asks that each speaker focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Any board questions will be for clarification. We have no speakers registered. Thank you. So at this time, I, we go ahead and close the citizens' open forum. The state board's citizens' open forum is closed at 10:33 AM. We'd like to thank all those speakers who did not share their views with the board. And, and I'm sorry to say that we don't have anyone here because it is an important part of our process to have a voice of the citizens. And we look forward to our meeting in, in August to hear from our, the citizens of our state. The next item on our agenda is update on the transition to Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA. And this, I'm excited about this. This is with, six months ago, seven months ago, it was approved. And now a lot of things have happened at the national level and we're redefining how we operate and roles and responsibilities. And Brad, we're looking forward to your report on the new regulations, a new direction of ESSA.
Great. I'm glad I picked up 45 minutes. I just wanted to give you a brief. You have You know, it takes me two hours to put together a 15-minute presentation, but I, if you want me to talk for three hours, I can start at any time. But I gave you a copy just of a few slides. There, there's a lot of work going on within the agency and across the state with our advisory council on, it looks like this. It's, with the work with ESSA, I just wanted to walk you through some timelines, some of the work currently going on as we speak, as well as how we're looking at transitioning through the next year. So with ESSA, the full implementation for all states is in the 17, 18 school year. So that gives all states this upcoming 16, 17 year to transition to the new law. The, the nice thing we like about that, with the board's approval of the accreditation framework, with some components of that work still left to be done, that aligns with what we're calling the zero year or the transition year for accreditation as well. So our goal is that accreditation and ESSA will be rolled out in 17, 18 seamlessly and at the same time. You may be aware that the U.S. Department of Ed put out for public comment, they're, they call it the Notice of Proposed Rulemaking. So that's the, a new, another acronym that we hope doesn't last too long. But public comments are due August 1. And we have been working with our advisory council. I think we sent you a copy of who across the state serves on that, chaired by Burt Moore out of West Elk. They'll be meeting again here. I think I have it on one of the slides here in a couple of weeks. What, what do they want to bring to you as a board as far as recommendations as a state that we would transition into this? But as of right now, they're also working on with our staff. When Congress puts the, the law out there, similar to when the legislature passes a statute, they then give this agency or this board or the U.S. Department of Ed has to then put out regulations to carry that forward. They just put out their proposed regulations or out for public comment. We will be providing comment to them and I'll share with you just a couple of areas that we'll be making comment on. And then again,
Can we go back just for a moment?
Yes.
And I, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
We have time.
But we have, you have the stakeholder group that you talked about. They're supposed to be representation from a variety of groups across the, the state. And that's one of the sticking points that I've read about on the national level. That has been a problem. You know, how did we choose and select the folks that were put onto that committee?
We looked at a variety of different, whether it's parents groups, we made sure that we had minority representation. We have had people contact us and say that they would like to be involved in it. I think as a board, you received a letter requesting. So immediately we reached out to them, let them know where our next meeting is. But we, we look at a lot of our advisory councils, selected members off, all of those reached out to school districts. But this isn't a new committee. We've had a ESEA advisory council for years. They didn't do a lot there in the final years when there wasn't a lot of changes going on with No Child Left Behind. But when we started anticipating that ESEA would be revised, we went in about two years ago and started building that team up, making sure there were representation from all of our different, all the councils or advisory groups that by statute are set out to advise this board. We pulled people off of that, off of those, as well as school districts and reached out to
Well, that was one of the core values of, of the new ESSA.
Yeah.
Was to have broad representation from the state for the, the development of our plan.
And we, we pulled
They didn't want it to be from departments.
About two years ago with the anticipation. Of course, it took about two years and then all of a sudden, in December of 2015, the president signed it. We had that group put back in place. But we still welcome people that would like to join that group. And, and so when they contact us, we extend an invitation back out to them.
I'm thinking we received the list of the members who were on that advisory committee.
That was
Okay, who they represent.
Couple of months ago. I think that may have been in, even back last spring. We can send that out again.
Wanted to give that to us.
Yes.
Is that on our
Website.
Part of our website on the board?
And I believe if, well, and I believe if you go out on our website under ESEA, you'll find membership of that committee. But we can send that back out to you again.
Okay, thank you. Deana Horst?
My question is about the public comments. And obviously they, I'm assuming they're on a website. Do we have, has that website been published, published?
Yes.
So
And we have links to it from ours.
So everyone knows where it is. I've not, we probably have received it and I don't remember that. But I would appreciate receiving that information so I could at least read through it. And I've had a question or two from, from the public about it. And then I can direct them to that as well. So thank you.
So within the, the regulations or the timeline, Kansas will have to submit our plan of how our, how Kansas will align to the new ESSA. There's two dates that they submissions that they allow states to submit. The first one is March 6th, which is very aggressive. And I'll explain to you some of the work ahead of us and why we think that's a little aggressive. But July 5th is almost too late because they have 120 days to review and respond. And if we submit by July 5th, we will be full into the new ESSA law before we get any comment on whether or not what we're proposing is in line with it. So, and I'll share with you some comments on that here a little bit too. But then again, the ESEA advisory council, and I want to make sure that it's always Elementary, Secondary and Education Act. Even NCLB was just the, the name at that time. So that's why we refer to it as the ESEA advisory council because who knows how many years from now, they'll come up with a new brand for it, but it's still ESEA. But they will, they're doing a lot of the work, going through a lot of the, the regulations, trying to, they've broken several subcommittees to do some work on that, which I'll explain here in a minute. But then they will help provide guidance to us to bring to this board as far as recommendations for the state plan. Some of the work in progress, we have, similar to what Randy was talking about a little bit ago, ESEA and accreditation doesn't fall, neither one of them falls under one team. It's a, it's what our agency does and should do. So we have staff from every team reading through the regulations. We have about 12 different eyes in groups looking at it, making sure it's not just one person's interpretation. We're also have, have staff members attending conferences that are being put on either by CCSSO, you know, just as many interpret it, because there are a lot of interpretations out there about what these regs are. So, so we have about 12 staff members working with it, not only the advisory council, but to make sure it's not just a couple people's interpretation. Again, our advisory council has broken down into some subcommittees to concentrate on some very specific components that we know are, are more clear within the regulations. One of those, for example, is states must set ambitious long-term goals with interim measures of progress. Well, that's pretty broad interpretation of what that means. We've, you may remember AYP stood for annual yearly progress. Our new acronym, because we live under acronyms, will be AMAS. And that is annual measures of student success. We, we thought about naming it Tony Moss, T Moss, but we decided AMAS because we, because again, like Randy said, academic performance is important. But at what point academically does a child or a building, where should they be for student success? Another subcommittee is working on, we will have to identify 5% of our schools to receive comprehensive support. Under the waiver, those were our priority and our focus schools. Under the new language, it's comprehensive support. And we have a subcommittee. Matter of fact, we met yesterday again for about the third, fourth time. And we, we reached out to our school districts that predominantly have our current priority schools. And we've really been looking at a model. We'll be taking it to the advisory council on July 26, sharing with them that not only how are kids doing academically in your building, but factoring that with risk factors. Where are our buildings that also have chronic poverty, mobility, attendance, ELL, some of those risk factors that are associated in a lot of our communities that tie to academic achievement? So, or we might weight academic performance at a 60% and look at risk factors at maybe a 40% to, so kind of a balanced, so it's not just based on a test score. And when you look at multiple ones, what we're seeing is you may have one building, their achievement is more affected by migrant mobility and attendance, or another one is affected more by chronic poverty. And, you know, it, it's not just one issue. So we've been working with those districts of trying to put a formula together to get truly at those feeder patterns with some of our school districts that you have four elementaries feeding a middle school, that's feeding a high school, but they all have different characteristics. So.
Mr. Willard has a question?
How does the apparently annual reporting to the U.S. Department of Education, the annual measures of student success, differ from our requirement to annually report AYP?
They're still in the statute and the regs, there is a requirement that there is building and district reporting. And that doesn't change. What we report is different. And that's, we have flexibility in how we design, how we hold schools accountable, even though it seems like the more we read it, the more the guardrails kind of tighten. And I'll get to, to some of our concerns here in a minute, but there is still the requirement for that, that building and district report card and what has to be on it. But it's, it will be different from AYP where every child in building had to hit the same target. And that's what we're looking at designing. But that subgroup, those two subgroups there, the first one is ambitious long-term goals that would be applied to all buildings across the state. And there's a group working on that. The other group is specifically, how are we going to identify those buildings and the districts that have those buildings that need that comprehensive intensive support, which is currently our Kansas Learning Network?
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On this AMAS, I assume this is looking at growth?
There, there's, in the regulations right now, there's several components. One of them is just annual achievement. Another one is growth over time. So we, we hope we can get to the point, back to the point that we worked at in our waiver to where one of our highest reward schools was an elementary school that went from 9% proficiency to 72. But under AYP, they're always listed as failing. So we will have in there a component of how your building is growing over time, but not that you all have to be at the same place that drove AYP.
Sally Cobble?
Brad, I want to make sure I understand this right. So on annual measure student success and the 5%, we as a state get to determine those by guidelines from the federal government?
Yes.
And are the guidelines flexible enough that we truly get to set those measures ourselves? That goes along with our vision plan?
There's a lot of detail in the proposed regs that not only give There's a lot of detail in the proposed regs that not only give us some flexibility, but at the same time are very specific. And that's what those subcommittees, and it's, that's why we're concerned that the timeline is so fast that it doesn't allow us to really have those conversations about how can we truly get at the heart of improved student learning, but yet meet their guidelines?
Do you feel comfortable that you're actually getting to, to make the decision on those two? Or do you feel like the feds are still driving that?
I'm the glass full. So, I still believe that we've got people in the field and people within this agency are very creative about how we want to approach this, including piloting some of these risk factors and really make the case that when we talk chronic poverty, we're talking about kids that year after year after year are living in poverty and how can, and we can capture that and really provide supports to districts for, for schools that are in communities. Some of these, they can't control, but some of them they can't. So, anyway, we, we believe right now we have some creative flexibility, but we still have that concern that there, we don't want to get.
That's a national debate.
It is. It's a national.
I received some things.
But in the meantime, we've got a lot of members really thinking creatively. At the same time, we want to make sure there's accountability in there, too, to every kid and every subgroup.
Well, I think it's important for us board members to know, when you run into that barrier that keeps us from doing our vision, so that we could do some lobbying for the agency, that we need to do our job. I, I don't want the fed, federal government to keep us from doing what we think's best for the kids of Kansas. And if we can help you as a board with those barriers, we need to know that.
Deana Horst?
Well, some of what I, of my questions have been answered. And thank you, Sally, for saying what you said because that was actually a question I had of, of one of our senators was how much oversight do you keep over these bills that you pass? You think something's happening, but when the rules and regs come out, they're totally different than what your intent is. And so, I think we need to know those details. But my, one question that hasn't, I don't think been answered, is when you talk about interim long-term goals with interim measures of progress, are you talking about yearly measures or are you talking about the, the measures districts might do in between the final yearly assessments that are done? Or just, so can that progress be other than just growth in our state assessments? Can it be portfolios? Can it be other types of arenas?
Right now, the language says interim. We don't believe it gets us defined to say yearly. We're looking right now tentatively at yearly, but we could do bi-year, you know, it's, so that they don't get so prescribed to say it's got to be an annual.
So, it's not.
We're currently looking at an annual. But there's one component in there that states have to include a non-academic, like a, it could be a, a school culture or a school, whether it's attendance, you have to select another one. That's one reason we're wanting to pilot some of these other non-academic to start seeing which ones truly have an impact. But at the same time, it's got to be a measure that is common across all buildings. So, you can't just pick graduation. Graduation's included in there, but you don't have a graduation rate for an elementary building. So, those are things we're looking at, but we are looking at right now, and without getting into the weeds, we're looking at an annual. But, but the important thing is that we don't want to go back to, is to say if your building academically is here, in six years, you ought to be here. Because we don't have longitudinal data yet on our state assessment. So, we can't claim that you ought to grow at a certain rate, but what we can do is annually monitor growth and see, are you on track with other buildings similar, you know? So, that's kind of what we're looking at annually, monitoring how kids performed over time. Instead of AYP, when we said in 2012, or 2002, you're here, by 2014, you have to be here and we snapped the line, we're not going to do that because we don't know how kids will respond to the new assessment yet. So, just a few of the concerns that we see that we're, we're looking at, trying to address. The first one is in there, it says that states must, in the report card, include specific information about a district and school level per pupil expenditures. If that stays, that would cost Kansas millions of dollars because we don't collect per pupil at a building. We would have to design, develop, train, collect, report, all across, we do district-wide, but how do you break down paper at a building? Or when you have teachers that are shared with, you know, it's a, we don't have that system in place. And it would cost, we don't even have a software program to do that. So, that, that is a concern to us right now. Another concern, and again, this is one of those where we believe we have some flexibility, but yet there's always this concern. And that is that you have to provide an annual summary rating for schools and that is predominantly based off the state assessment. You know, we can do that and we can show where they're at and be creative in our approach to doing that. Our concern is there's not enough clarity. And back to something Ken said is, we don't want it to take the focus off or the board's vision where we really want to go. Yes, they need to be academically prepared. Their academic performance will be reported on their report card, will measure growth. But if, if it, if that starts driving the conversation again, all about the state test and away from the board's vision. So, that's our concern in that area. And that's just something that I think is probably something that we, we may just be pulling forward from an old no child left behind era, but that's something that, there's not enough clarity there for us to, to relax on that. And then the.
Ken Willard has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You said when you covered the first bullet point, if that stays in, it'll cost us millions of dollars. Where did this come from? Is this in the current regs that have been handed down to us? And what is the likelihood that they're going to disappear?
My understanding, and we've been working closely with Senator Roberts and his staff, getting clarity on this, our understanding that this is actually written in the law, not the U.S. Department of Ed's regs. And the reason it was placed in there is that it was, might have been a bargain that, about the, the, the whole supplanting in that. Well, we'll approve that if you put this in there. The supplementing versus supplanting to where if we get 100 million in federal, we got to make sure there's 100 million, you know, and you can't. So, I don't know what the issues around the supplement and supplant was. There was a group that didn't like it, but they said, but if you put this in, we'll vote for it. And this honestly, to us, was under the radar. And once it finally, we noticed it in the regs, but then I guess in the actual law, this is written in there.
So, it's not going anywhere.
Unless, and that's why we immediately reached out to Senator Roberts, who was on that committee, and they are very well of it, as long, along with Alexander, that, that is a huge concern across most states that we don't have those systems in design. So, they're aware of it, but it's a huge concern for us to have to, to meet that first bullet. We don't, we don't even have a software program for schools to even, and then all the training. Not, not arguing whether it's right or wrong, it's just we don't have it.
Well, I have heard repeatedly that this law was going to be a lot smaller federal footprint on states, and I'm struggling to, to accept that at this point. And, and I think that, I mean, this is early, I suppose, but at some point, we have to decide if we're going to comply with this kind of nonsense or not. That, that, that doesn't educate kids, it doesn't do anything for us or anybody else.
And our point is, what would you do with it if you had it? The other part is, and I didn't put it on here, is it includes language that once we collect it, then the state will give direction to the locals on how they should be spending and allocating on a per pupil at the district. And so, it's, yeah, that's our biggest concern right there.
Well, I see numbers thrown all around all the time about what we spend per student. Okay, moving on.
And then the last part, our goal is that, yes, ESSA is a Title I law that holds us accountable to our most needy children. And the one measure that we have that we can use with that is how they do academically. And that is important. We want to be able to track student success academically. We need to be able to get supports to our, to our buildings that have the highest needs and challenges, but we are trying concertedly that we will not let ESSA trump the conversation like NCLB did. And because we want to use the accreditation model tied to the board's vision to drive most of our conversations. We will be compliant with ESSA, but it's got to be able to fit in to the board's larger vision. Like Kenzen said, yes, our kids need to be academically prepared. And we have a way to use the state assessment, some of the decisions that have been made to shrink that footprint, focus more. So, we want to be compliant and use it for what it's intended for. Are our kids academically prepared? And, and make sure that if we have schools that are not, that we get them the supports and the resources they need, but we don't want it to trump the conversation like it did. We want the board's vision to do that. So, that's just a quick update.
Randy? So, Brad, what I hear is like several things. One, we have a, and we have advisory groups that are working to break down the, the law. We have the rulemaking that's going on in Washington as we speak, and there's a public, until what, August 1st, it's open?
Yes.
Public comment session, which we can go on there as well. We're finding out new things about ESSA that we had not anticipated. Okay? And as you said, the guardrails seem to be closing a little, but, you know, and I've heard that there's been some rather loud voices in Washington as they start having hearings when, at, in the Senate at least, that that's not what we said. So, we're at the beginning stages of a, a, a law that affects all 50 states and territories and all the students of the, of the United States, and we're trying to apply it, you know, here in Kansas. I want to thank the group, the individuals who have volunteered and are participating, you know, on these advisory groups. And I hope that as we go along, if, if groups feel like they're not, their voices aren't being heard, that we're finding a way to include those voices, you know, in our, in this. Because that was one of the main things in the ESSA, was to have a people that had felt like they didn't have a voice at the table, to have that voice. So, let's, let's be as inclusive as we can.
And that group is meeting July 26th at 9:00 in the morning at the Summer Leadership Conference in Wichita.
Board members are invited?
Yeah, board members are invited and it's an open and we've put it out there, so.
I'll be there.
Thank you. Great.
Okay. Thank you, Brad, for that. More to come. We look forward to that. Thank you. Why don't we take a break here right now? It's 11:07 and we'll come back into session at 11:17, or 11:20. Let's just make it 11:20. We'll come back into session. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a report from a blue ribbon task force that we have had and working for us, giving us recommendations on the educator shortage. My goodness. Randy's going to introduce our presenters and the task force.
This is all Western Kansas.
So, Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, if you pick up any national publication related to education, that you'll see that every state in this country is facing a teacher shortage. Kansas is certainly no exception to that. And probably that discussion about what to do with that can raise intense emotions, I call it with our friends, you know, between ourselves, about how best to resolve that. And it ranges from the principal or superintendent on any, any given day, is trying to find someone to teach their kids, knowing that they have to have someone that's really qualified to do that. And as, as again, Sally and I were in Westkin yesterday saying, we, we have a science position, we have zero applications. I've, I've had no one call, I've had no one text, I've had no one email me. What am I going to do for our kids? I mean, that's, that's the reality on the ground to systems, you know, looking at systems of how we approach that. So, on your behalf, and this is not, this has been done, you know, previously, too, this is not the first time, I want to engage our major stakeholders in Kansas to have that rich and robust discussion. And I, they will tell you that they did. And that's good, and that's healthy for our state to do that. And so, I want to introduce to you the two chairmen of this committee, and they'll, they can tell you about the makeup. I gave some simple charges. Bring us some immediate things that this board could, could put into place that might help. Give some intermediate things that should be looked at and give some long-term. And they, they've taken this task very thoughtfully. So, Mr. Rudy Perez is the principal at Norton High School, and he faces these issues every day. How to put someone of great quality in front of kids? Because as all of you know, you can read research after research after research. Of the things that we control, putting an outstanding teacher with kids has the biggest impact on their future success, of the things that we can control. And so, Rudy's work daily, not just in hiring, but also in trying to provide great instruction in Western Kansas is certainly beneficial. He's been a great leader through the principal ranks across the state. So, thank you, Rudy, for taking this challenge. And Dr. Ken Weaver from Emporia State University, you know, also sets not only and oversees, how are we going to prepare students to come out, but how can we, in universities and college settings, work together to ensure that this. college settings, work together to ensure that this shortage can be, be handled in a, in a very effective way? And Ken, I want to thank you for all of your work on this, on this committee. And I'm sure they're going to defer and say, the committee did all the work, and they did, but these two gentlemen took this charge seriously. They're here to, to give you some recommendations today and walk through those with you. I'm sure that's going to spur discussion across our state, and thus it should, thus it should. So Ken and Rudy, thank you. On behalf of all of us here on the State Board and the State Department, thank you for your service and the entire committee, and welcome to the State Board meeting today.
Thank you all very much.
A blue light on?
Yes, thank you. So thank you very much. Great, great to be with you today, and I do want to acknowledge that we do have two other members of the committee, the task force here as well, Dean Shirley LaFever from Wichita State University, and Superintendent Michelle Miller, so from Vermillion. Yes, very good. So we're delighted that they have joined in, and I've, Rudy and I have invited them to make any comments as, as we present, as they wish to do so. So this is an opportunity to present to you our final report. Rudy's going to describe the, the nuts and bolts of how we've got to this point in time, but I want to draw your attention. Thank you, sir. There we go. You, you heard Jim and Randy talk about educator shortages. As we have gone through the, the data and the thinking and these, these intense meetings where we had 28 of us trying to really wrap our minds around what, what is happening here in Kansas, we found the term "teacher shortages," and we focused just on teachers. To be too blunt, it really, it's, it's a much more complex and richer issue, and, and we came to be thinking about this in terms of teacher vacancies and supply, the supply of teachers. And that opens up the richness and also provides some focus for the conversations that I think are going to be more fruitful than if we were just talking about teacher shortages. So, so that's, that's what we've done as a task force. And, and with that as a prelude to get started, Rudy will get us going.
Okay, and Dr. Watson talked about his charge to us, and we were looking at the teacher shortages, vacancies and supply. And, and we took that very seriously, that we would get together, and there was 28 people involved, 28 stakeholders. We had superintendents, we had principals, we had teachers, we had higher ed, we had human resources, we had service center personnel. So all these people were put together to look at these immediate, intermediate and long-term goals that we were supposed to come about. We had, we met four, four different times. We met in April, we met in May, and then, and twice in June. At our first meeting, they were all about three hours long. We talked just basically about the data that was out there, about vacancies that were appearing by region, by endorsement area, and then we went through this as well as looking at the number of people that were leaving the profession, either moving to another state, moving to a different area, or retiring altogether. So we, we looked at this, we looked at this as a group, and then what we did is we divided into five smaller groups, and we started talking about the importances of, what are the issues with retaining, maintaining, and effective quality teacher staff? We did that in April. In May, we got together, we started off with our small groups, and we, we got additional data from the KSDE, which is very, very beneficial. They went ahead and added some more data that we had asked for in the April meeting, went through again, started talking about those three, three types of goals. And then we also had them shared amongst ourselves. The next meeting, June 2nd, we went through that again, and we kind of fine tuned it. And the goal on that was to try to come up with a draft copy so that we could have some idea of the presentation we were going to brief to you today. We were able to fine tune that a little bit better, and then on, and the last meeting, we got together and we went ahead and created a final draft copy with the, with the goals in mind. Again, probably the biggest thing was getting the data, and again, the members of the KSDE, Scott Myers and, and his group, Susan and Catherine Schmiedling, Zach and Lori, they helped a great deal in bringing us what we needed to look at as far as numbers. And again, we, we decided we were going to go ahead and look at this, and it caused a lot of discussion amongst the different groups, because this group is composed of different areas, urban, rural, remote, and so you had a lot of different needs, a lot of different alternative places that people were looking at in the area, what, what their, their shortages were. We had four goals. One was to fulfill the commissioner's charge. The second was to ensure that, that the report preserved the effectiveness of teachers in Kansas for Kansas kids and for Kansas schools. The third one was to write a report that established a baseline for understanding, why do we have vacancies, and what, what do we, what do we do about those supplies? And the last one was to continue the study of the vacancy and supply issue that we have here in the state of Kansas. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Ken, and he's going to talk a little bit about our vacancy and supply.
In the, in the report, this section is titled, "Understanding the Complexities of Teacher Vacancies and Supply," and, and it's a rich issue, and there, as Rudy indicated, there was an abundance of data that was presented to us. Some of the data was not as, as robust as we needed, because perhaps all the school districts didn't participate, or there were errors in completing the data, or, and that's the, the situation with the teacher vacancy data. We only had one year, 2015, 2016, where all the school districts responded to the report, completed the, completed the report. Sometimes it was a coding issue. So for example, when teachers come in, they're, they're coded by the different subjects they teach. So if you have a science teacher teaching chemistry and physics, that teacher's counted twice. And so to really identify exactly specific counts can be a little bit complicated. The fourth goal that Rudy mentioned is one that we will actually conclude our presentation with, and that is a recommendation to create a committee on teacher vacancies and supply, to continue collecting data, to continue to provide guidance to the State Department of Education about the kind of data and the quality of the data that are needed in order to provide the kind of insights that we need to have, and kind of an assessment of what's going on out there in the field, to be able to make recommendations about things that we can be doing to either enrich the supply of teachers or to ameliorate the number of vacancies that are created. So, so we have 286 school districts in 2015, 2016. 220 of those school districts had no vacancies. So there were 277 vacancies unfilled for that school year, this past school year. And the challenge was, or is, that for that year, those vacancies clustered. They were not equitably distributed across those 286 school districts. So the southwest region of the state, Kansas City, Kansas, and Wichita, all right, had the lion's share of that 277 vacancies. And if you look to figure one in your report, there you will see, and that figure one is on page four, you'll see the vacancies that, that, that are there, and you'll see where those three locations constitute where most of the vacancies are. Now, this is only one year's worth of data, so it's going to be, I think, imperative that we continue the data collection, to continue to look, which we will, but to continue to look at and examine these trends. Is it just something about the southwest, or about Kansas City, Kansas, or about Wichita? Or is it, as I think many of us suspect, this is a, a more pervasive kind of problem with trying to attract and retain teachers in these areas of the state? Another, another analysis that the KSDE staff provided for us was looking at movers and levers. The movers are Kansas teachers who leave their school district and move to another school district, but still in Kansas. So they're retained in Kansas, but they leave one school district to move to another school district. Again, one year's worth of data, but it's, it's, it's clear that a lot of the teachers who are teaching in Kansas, if they leave their school district, they're heading to the northeast part of the state. So the northeast part of the state was the beneficiary of a lot of the stu, of a lot of the teachers who left other, other places in Kansas to teach in the northeast. The northwest was also, all right, a recipient, much more of a recipient of bringing in than of, of their teachers moving. So again, with one year's worth of data, it's, why is this pattern the way it is? Is this something that's a consistent and stable pattern? Again, another reason why we think continuing to have a small committee to work on looking at the data and analyzing the data for the State Department of Education would be valuable. The levers, which are on table two, are those individuals who leave the profession. They are, actually, let me take that back. They leave the Kansas teaching profession. Okay? And, and here is where we end up with a couple of concerns with the data. You will see, for example, that we have 332 who left the profession. All right? So why? Why did they leave the profession? Where did they go? I mean, we, we haven't moved out of state. We have 263 who moved out of state. Well, again, why did they leave their, why did they leave their position, their Kansas teaching position? The, the one that's of most concern, of course, we have 1,123 who retired. Rudy and I are going to show you a distribution later on, actually, I'll, I'll do that in about a minute, showing you the distribution of teachers by region, by years of experience. And those who are retiring have pretty much retired. Okay? So, so, and I'll wait to say more about that when you can see that figure. The, the one of, of most concern, though, is the 500 who didn't provide any reason. And, and those reasons could well greatly influence the cat, the other categories, and how we might interpret the whole picture about why teachers are leaving their work, their job here in Kansas. So, so this is, this is a, a distribution here that we continue to study. And another is termination, 245. Is there something that we can be doing to provide better mentoring so that our teachers, and, and of course, I'm looking here to the, the teacher preparation programs? Is there something that we need to be doing to make sure that our teachers, our new teachers are ready to go from the day they graduate, so they're, they're, they're ready to go into their, into their new classrooms? So again, there's a termination 245. If we have a concern about the supply of teachers, and there is, we do have a concern about the supply of teachers, then, then we have to be, be more proactive in trying to get those teachers up to speed so that they're not terminated. So, so continuing on with the teacher supply, this, this image here is based on Title II data. So when you're thinking about the data sources, and you heard Rudy talk about all the data that we were, we were presented by KSDE staff, one data source that we've used in our report is the 2015, 2016 vacancy data. Another data source are the Title II reports that every teacher preparation provider, all right, public or private, submits on an annual basis. And that report, it's, it's a requirement for any institute, any university or college that receives federal monies, and it has two different important figures. The number of program completers, which you can see with the orange bars, and the number of students that are majoring in, in, in teacher education, and you can see that in kind of the blue bars. Okay? So there are two different takeaway messages here. And one is, when you start looking, let's say, from 2011 to 2014, and, and 2000, that's, that 2011 is a good benchmark here, because it has the most education majors within the two, three, six-year span of data presented in this figure, but also the highest number of program completers at 2,271. So, so we've got, again, for the, the public and private providers for teacher education, so the 25 public and private colleges and universities that have teacher ed programs, there are now, the last report, 1,901 teachers. Now that report is a year old. We'll expect to see that report, the next iteration of that report come out in the fall. But what's of more concern is what's happened to the number of majors. From 7,752 to 5,379, that's a 2,400, about a 2,400 drop. And so how will that play out when we start, when we look at the, the data for 15 and 16 and 17? So that probably is the one piece of evidence that gives us concern, the most concern about the supply of teachers coming from our teacher preparation institutions in the state. So we've talked about the vacancies, we've talked about supply from new teachers. Here is another graph, and this is the one I mentioned just a minute ago. This is a distribution of teachers by region, by years of experience. So if you were thinking that there were a lot of teachers ready to retire, you would see the distribution being more sizable on the back end, you know, those teachers with lots of years of experience. But that's not the pattern we see here. 22% of, a little over one-fifth of the teachers last year in Kansas had four years or less of experience. About 40% are nine years or less. So it is fairly easy to draw from that distribution the inference that Kansas is vulnerable to early-career teachers either leaving their job altogether, or leaving their district, or leaving Kansas for greener pastures. So that is another data point that gives us cause for concern, all right, is that we have so many new teachers. What is happening mentoring-wise across the 286 school districts in the state? So, so from all that, we have drawn a couple of different conclusions. So, so this past year, we had most of the positions filled, but again, the vacancies that were there clustered. And, you know, it's, it's the southwest, a lot of, a lot of Kansas is rural. So, so do we have to be more overt about, about trying to get teachers into the rural areas, all right, incentivize or whatever? There's a slight decline in teachers prepared, but a steeper decline in teacher education majors. Kansas is vulnerable to retaining early-career teachers. We need to recruit teachers to rural, and when I say "we," I'm saying "we" in a very broad way. When, when Rudy presents the recommendations here in about a minute, we have, we have assigned recommendations just about every entity that is involved with, with education, because we do see it as a responsibility of all of us, regardless of our role, to be able to present teaching in Kansas as a fabulous opportunity, as, as an opportunity that can be a career and can really enrich the future of our state by working with our children. And of course, that's a, a great segue to making teaching as a career attractive to elementary, middle and high school students and their parents, because that's, that's become a key piece there, is the parents need also to be supportive of their children's choice to become a teacher. Retain early-career teachers, and then, we don't know how much flexibility there is here, but, you know, those work after retirement rules seem to be an obstacle for bringing retired personnel back into the workforce. So, so if we really start seeing much more of a, of a supply concern, we do have a, what we believe to be a fairly robust supply we can tap into, but it won't be tapped into if they're going to be at a loss for salary if school districts will be penalized. So I'm going to, Rudy's going to talk now about the recommendations.
Thanks, Ken. Okay, we found four major challenges to the teacher supply. First of all is low salaries. Salaries aren't, have not kept up, I think, overall, with, before we're going with inflation and the cost of liberty in most areas, a lot of our teachers are working secondary jobs. Second is low esteem for teaching as a profession. It's getting beat up pretty good. Talking to my, even just my staff, talking about how it's difficult for them to, you know, to get their kids to go into education, you know, the kids are asking them, why are you, why are you teaching still? You know, they're, they're beating you up left and right, you don't get the respect that they used to get. So that, that's another thing. Current and ongoing instability of, of education-related funding, that continues to be an issue, I think, with of all of, all of... That continues to be an issue, I think, with of all of, all of our teachers, administrators. And I, I think that has some effect on the number of teachers that are going into education and looking at your completers as well. And also new changes to the capers which Ken had alluded to earlier. These are some of the recommendations for the state board. Convene a group of community members, business leaders, representatives from state education organizations and media professions to create public relations campaigns to tell Kansas inspirational stories about what's happening in the classroom. Talk about the value, the benefits of a career in teaching. And also disseminate all this, not only through social media, but television, radio, and print. I think this is a very important PSA is to get out there and, and let people know the great things that are happening in our, in our classrooms. There's great things happening every day in our classrooms. We have great teachers in our classrooms and they're, they're doing, they're, they're putting their best foot forward. And I think people need to know about that. Also engage local leaders and rural committees to create regional consortia to develop initiatives to incentivize teaching in their communities. And list aid of local chambers of commerce, Main Street, other economic development agencies. I think this is very important, especially when we talk about our rural committees, communities. Getting the people involved in the community onboard to help recruit and retain quality staff. That's very important. And I think once we get everybody onboard, I think this is a, it would be a great way to maintain our quality staff that we have. KSTE, expand the restricted license to include elementary. That was a big discussion point as we were talking about, uh, the licensure will, which was really good that Susan Hubbard came in and talked about how people can be licensed in the state and getting that information out to our superintendents and our principals, knowing that there's alternate routes to the classroom. Complete analysis of teacher salaries by years of experience and age. And again, giving some sort of baseline for people as they go out there and try to get that more consistent across the board. Convene a task force to identify regions, teachers leave the profession. I think that is really huge. Ken alluded to, there was five hundred people who left the profession that gave no reason. It'd really be nice to know, why did you leave? Was it because of leadership? Was it because you had no mentoring? Was it professional development? Was it not a correct fit? We had this discussion a lot about talking about teachers. One teacher may not be good in my building, may go to Ken's building and is a fantastic teacher. And it's again, finding the right person, the right fit, in the right classroom and, and giving them the tools to be the most effective teacher they can be. Again, school districts offer financial incentives to attract teachers, especially to high-need areas and harder field, teaching fields. And I think this happens more and more. I think it happens more, especially in the rural areas. They're giving relocation allowances. They're also giving, uh, additional stipends when they move as far as like housing incentives and that type of thing. And I think this is what they're having to do in order to do that. I think more, more districts need to go that right route. Provide stipends for teacher leaders. And again, this goes back to, we talked about, uh, we talked about mentoring. We talked about teacher leaders. We have great teachers. It'd be nice to be able to show them that we do appreciate their hard work because they're only taking care of their classroom, they're helping mentor younger teachers and helping them to be successful. Start future student leader, uh, student organizations. And again, getting that into the point where kids want to become teachers. You know, we can go into individual study plans, identify those kids that look like they're going to want to go into teaching and get them, inform those clubs and be able to get that started to get kids in, in the right direction and provide them examples because a lot of kids do not know all the benefits of going into teaching in Kansas. There's a lot, such as the Ross Grant and, and the other scholarships that are out there. There's, there's certain things that we could give that to them. Again, use individual study plans to identify students. Okay, offer financial incentives to attract student teachers such as free housing and stipends. And I think as, as we, we had discussions as a group, a lot of discussions went about as far as we find people that have the degree, they don't have an education degree, they're looking to get that teacher education degree. How do they get that? And still be able to continue to provide for their families, whether they're parents or whether they work within the district? Because when you get into student teaching, you basically stop working and that becomes your job and you're not retaining any income. So doing something about that would, would, would help out quite a bit. Again, encourage parent educators, substitute teachers to pursue licensure or education degrees. And I think we're seeing more and more of that. You're seeing a lot of that grow your own. I think they realize that, hey, I can do the job as well and get them in there and provide those resources so that they can get there. And when you get them there, that stability will be there and you won't see it much moving. Fully utilize, monitor, and keep accurate Kansas Education Employment Board. Sort of accurately reflects the current state of teacher vacancies in the state. Again, making sure that if you have a vacancy, if everybody uses it, we know what's out there and what is no longer out there and it'll be better track for your administrator to find your teachers. Teacher preparation providers, elevate the visibility to prospective candidates of rural opportunity zones for loan forgivenesses. And we talked about the Ross Grants. And I think they're out there and I don't know that a lot of candidates know that that's out there. And it's a viable option for them as far as financial incentive. Elevate the visibility of the Kansas Teacher Service Scholarship and also create two-plus-two partnerships with community colleges to prepare teachers. Restructure student teaching model to account for past teaching experience and compensate student teachers. A lot of states do compensate their student teachers either before, during, or after they're, they're done. And that was a big discussion point when we, when we were talking. We talked about that, that became a very important aspect of that student teaching and that being able to, to create that environment and that opportunity, but still getting, be able to allow them to continue doing what they're doing. So that would cause some, probably some great restructuring as far as that teaching model, student teaching model. Survey first-year teachers and their principals to assess preparedness for teaching. I think that's very important because a lot of, a lot of students are, are more prepared than others. And again, that creates that, that partnership between the principal, the first-year teachers and that, and they're being able to work with each other to be able to find out if there's any shortcomings or where that's at and being able to give that feedback to the higher ed institutions. Continue to explore strategies for enhancing affordability of teacher prep programs. Again, going back to the financial aspect of being able to stop work and focus on that education credentialing is, is very important. Okay, state legislature, increase funding to support salaries increases, the teacher mentoring at the district level. As you know, we had that mentoring piece a few years back and it was, it was a great piece. But funding ran out. I think that's very important. I think that was one of the main discussions as we discussed as a group that everybody could agree on. That mentoring was one of the most important aspects of having that effective teacher and maintaining that effective teacher because they have to have that to fall back on. Create a financial incentives like income tax relief to keep teachers in the field. Provide funding to prepare more teachers for designated high-need geographic areas and harder field, teaching fields. It's getting to be, it's getting to be in some districts that hard to fill or the high-need area is every position, whether it be elementary, all the way to your, your science positions. Create a teacher recruitment and retention center to help devise programs, strategies to increase teachers in the states. There's some out there that are good models. That would be nice to be able to maybe borrow some of their ideas and be able to implement that here in the state of Kansas. Fund incentives for encouraging teachers to teach in high-need content areas or high-need areas. That's always going to become a, a big issue for us. Selected recommendations for the education organizations present to the pre-K twelve students, parents, and other community members in their respective communities, the importance and value of becoming a Kansas teacher. And personally, I, I have great staff. And I, I think every administrator would brag on their staff because of all the work that they do, the hours they put in outside the classroom, outside the classroom, the stuff that do, do for their, their students. And having been, been outside of Kansas, I'm proud to say that I, I'm from Kansas because our teachers, they get it. They understand what being a teacher is about. It's not just about teaching content. It's about that relationship with that student, getting them to reach their potential so they be successful adults. And that's what we need, we need successful adults. So where do we go from here? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna talk about creating vacancy and supply committee. I gotta catch up here, I'm behind on myself here. Ken, you wanna come help me with this one? We're gonna, he's gonna go through the vacancy and supply committee, again, will help us.
So, um, we, we come before you today to present the idea that what we presented is a start. It is not the, the final word in any way. And, and, and we find the work of the task force being very valuable and useful. So we are recommending the creation of a committee housed in some place, State Department of Education, Professional Standards Board probably, to continue the study of teacher vacancies and supply. To, to provide, to work with the State Department of Education to, to suggest data, additional data that could be collected to ensure that we're really trying to collect data, that we, we reassure or, or communicate with superintendents the importance of the data that they are reporting, that they be engaged in that process in terms of participation from their school districts. And, and that also then, once that data is collected, here's a, here's a group of folks that can help analyze that data and use those data to assess the effectiveness of the efforts that we are trying to, to, or that you all are trying to lead in the, the department staff in terms of creating a more robust teacher supply or ensuring a robust teacher supply. So, any more you want to say?
Well, thank you very much for your report. Very comprehensive, a lot of work was put into it, thank you. To you as your, from your leadership as well as to the members of your committee. Thank you very much. Board members, questions and comments? Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen, for your work. There's a lot to celebrate in here, there really is. One quick point. Quote from Albert Einstein. "We can't solve the problems by using the same kind of thinking we use to create them." So my question to you would be, how many of your, how many individuals on your task force were not a part of the system, the existing system of education?
I would say that all of them were part of the system. I mean, they were all superintendents, principals, teachers, school board members, teacher preparation providers.
My suggestion would be as we go forward that we invite some people who are not necessarily part of the system but have a different perspective. Thank you, gentlemen.
Jim Porter.
Thank you, this is really amazing work and I appreciate the work you've done. You made one comment at the end about who should do this and you referred to the Professional Standards Board. Rudy is the vice chair of the Professional Standard Board and everybody. This Professional Standards Board met just a couple of weeks ago and was expecting this report and is standing ready to actually work in cooperation to the point where we normally would meet again in September. But this Professional Standard Board agreed that if, if it is assigned to them, that they will meet in the next couple of weeks so that, so that they can actually have work done prior to this next board. And I would recommend that, that we pursue that that way so we can start immediately looking into these recommendations. There are several here that have been discussed at this Professional Standards Board before, but, but I would recommend that that's what we do and really jumpstart this process. Again, I appreciate the work of the entire task force, I think this is excellent work.
Ken Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Weaver, Dr. Weaver. Good to see you again. You talked about the greening in Kansas, Kansas teacher cohort. Do, do you have, did you discover information about how that greening compares with other states in the region or around the country?
You, you ask a really good question. And in fact, the State Department of Education staff did provide for us reports of task forces and committees in other states similar to ours. I did not see in the few, I did not comprehensively read them all. I think there were six, I think, or so states. I did not see that particular information presented. The distribution of teachers by years of experience.
Mr. Chair, may I follow?
Yes, please.
I think one of the, maybe the first item that was put out as a recommendation had to do with salaries. And that's a reasonable conclusion, I guess. I, my question regarding that is, are, we're about in the middle of the pack, as I understand, on teacher salaries? Is there, um, are the states who pay less than we do experiencing similar or worse problems?
I would, I would, I would say, I would, I would say, I would say it depends on where you're at. That salary depends on where you're at. You know, that geographically, I think the salaries are all over the board as well. Just to give you an example, I just about lost a counselor the other day. She was gonna go to Nebraska for a twenty thousand dollar raise. I mean, these are the situations I'm dealing with because I'm ten miles from the border. And the grass is greener over there because their salaries are, have gone up quite a bit. They've actually, I think Nebraska's probably surpassed us if we were to look at it in depth.
Well, I, I accept that, the truth of that. But I also hear neighboring states saying the same thing about people living there and coming to Kansas. So it's a little bit difficult to get your arms around this, you know, because it looks like we've taken, it, it's very easy to come to quick conclusions without actually understanding the whole dynamic. So I'm suggesting that, that maybe a broader look is, needs to be carried out with this committee.
And, and we agree wholeheartedly. And, and I would only add that, that what we want to do is prepare a, a figure like this that instead of showing percent of teachers, show salaries. So salaries on, on the Y-axis by years of experience and by region. And we just didn't have enough time to prepare that. But that's one of our goals for next year.
One of the things I did like about what I saw that you presented was the reference to local communities taking some responsibility for creating incentives for people, for, I mean, it's, it's, it's their problem. It's all of our problem, but they, they need to be a part of that solution as well. Another question I have, I don't want it to be misinterpreted, but coming from the business world, when we look at losing market share and, and generally a downtrend, we look at ways to increase productivity and capacity of our existing resources or personnel. Was that a part of your discussion at all? And the, and I'm just, this is what just pops into my mind. We, we take kids out of high school in, in classes of twenty to twenty-five kids and put them into college the next year in classes of a hundred to three hundred. And nobody thinks anything of that. And, and I suppose that's a good thing. So I'm just wondering, if we're looking at capacity, especially for, for educators in higher ed, I mean, in the upper grades, are, are we too locked in to the institutional idea that we need seventeen to twenty kids in a classroom? My, my impression is that we are, but I think, I'm just wondering if you looked at that or if not, I'm suggesting that be a part of the consideration going forward as well.
Mr. Willard, I, I know that that was one of the concerns when we looked at vacancies is because as the discussion among the group went, they said, well, we really didn't have a vacancy because we absolve this position, we absolve that position. And I think that's what's happening in a lot of schools that are getting, feeling the crunch. I, I, I know, in fact, in my school, we absolve positions. And you know, you're right, you know, I think there's been a lot of, what was good about this group is everybody thought outside the box. We have, we have to get rid of the notions that everything's black and white, we need to go in the gray area a little bit. And I would say, I would say that was what was very difficult to disseminate that information on vacancies because so many districts in discussions were talking about, well, we didn't open that up because we've just absolved that position. I think that's happening.
Well, and if this, and if this kind of problem exists outside of Kansas, it suggests that it's bigger than our issues. And, and that, that maybe we need to consider a new normal in, in some regard. I'm not saying we shouldn't address the problem. I think that we're doing the right thing to look at it and figure out ways to address it. But the normal may be different going forward than it has been in the past. And we have to, and if that is the case, we, you know, smart people get around and say that is the case, then we have to figure out- the case," then we have to figure out how to adapt to that new normal and make it work for our kids while we, while we go to number one in the country. I'm not, I'm not discounting the problems at all, but I think the suggestion that we need a broader group looking at this than just educators is not a negative position, but something that we ought to really consider. Thank you.
Janet Waugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great report. Thank you so much. I recognize all the efforts that went into it, and, and I think it's outstanding. I really do. And patience is absolutely not one of my virtues, so I want it all implemented tomorrow, yesterday. So, I'm ready to go on this. I mean, I really think we need to look at other areas, you know, keep, continue on and find new areas. A couple of things that kind of stuck out to me that I'm, would like to suggest, I guess, is certainly that 500 that just left for no reason. We need to check into that. I would also like to check into those that changed professions. Why did they change their profession? I mean, was it just not a good fit? Was, what was the reason for changing professions? Another one I'd like to check into are the retirees. I have a lot of retirees telling me they, they're taking early retirement, they're just frankly can't take it anymore, you know, the challenges that, well, many, many reasons, you know, and I'd like to see what those are for the early retirees. So, those are some other areas that I would like to see, and I'm very concerned about KCK. I certainly understand that because I represent them, and I know exactly what they're facing, and I'd like to see what we could do to help them. And financially, I recognize that's a big problem. We have a lawsuit right now. They just solved one end of it, and they've got another area facing them. So, certainly financially, it's huge, and salaries haven't been increased, and I know many people that have had to take second jobs, teachers currently, that are teaching. But anyway, I guess the financial end, we will certainly discuss probably later today, you know, but thank you so much for your efforts, and I really appreciate it.
And if I just follow up, when you were asking about our, looking at early retirees, did you want us to find out why they are choosing to retire early?
Yes, I would like to know, because some of them are doing it because they, I've had people tell me, "I planned on teaching another five years," because I love teaching, but I'm just tired of being battered, not by the kids, but by the legislature, by other outsources, and they said, "They're just tired, they're, they're sore of being beat on," you know, and, and, and I think we're losing some teachers due to that also, but I'd like to see if that's a reality, or, you know, because I know I've heard it from several people who have taken early retirement. And by the way, Ken said something about teacher salaries. It's my understanding, we were like 42nd or 49th in the nation, so I guess maybe we need clarification on that.
Well, these are exactly what we were hoping would happen, is to elicit questions that we can continue.
Yeah, so I'd just like to see, I'd like, I think we need some stronger information to find out exactly where we are on that. Thank you.
I do have looking at comparative data from the states that surround us.
Right, thank you.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to the committee. Very comprehensive, very thorough report, and you just met four times. That's pretty remarkable that you were able to get that much done. Couple of comments and couple of suggestions, and I'll start with that particular chart. To me, that's pretty enlightening to look at the numbers in the zero to four and five to nine, which tells me we need to refocus our efforts in mentoring and in professional development, when we look at retention of those particular new folks into the profession. So, to me, that would be a support area for those new folks, because we do lose a lot of those folks in their first five years. Another suggestion, I know you're going to present to this, to the Professional Standards Board, I would suggest you present it to the superintendents, maybe to the higher ed folks, because we need, they need, I think they need to see this data. And then, one more suggestion I might have, when you looked at the vacancy, the higher, the high vacancy areas, which was southwest Kansas, Wichita, which is the area I represent, and then KCK. Maybe you could generate some subcommittees in those particular areas, like in southwest Kansas, some of those superintendent, some HR folks, and some higher ed folks in that area, correspondingly in the Wichita area, correspondingly in the, in the KCK area, that can look at, and that would be a more immediate targeted area. What can we do to help those particular areas, since those are obviously our three larger areas as far as vacancies are concerned? So, just an idea. And then, one other thing that was, that was shown up there, and when we talk about, because, you know, colleges, it's expensive, and we got a lot of our young people, and, you know, it's just tough for some of them to get to college. And up there, I saw a two plus two idea, and I think that's a great idea. You can get these students in, and they can do a couple of years in community college, which we all know is a little more cost efficient. I had one son that went to community college, and for the first two years, mom was happy about that. So, you know, but I think some of those two plus two arrangements for a lot of our students, and a lot of those students will be good teachers, would be a very good thing, and if some of our four-year institutions can create some partnerships, and some of them probably have with some of their local community colleges, I think that would be a very effective way, and maybe particularly in our, some of our areas where we're having lots of vacancies.
To just a PS to that, maybe think about those two plus two partnerships where that, those second two years are delivered at the community college. I know there are concerns in southwest Kansas, if a child leaves the area, they may not come back to the region, so.
Yeah, which, and then you go into kind of a grow your own, which, then you get kids to stay. Thank you for your work.
Dina Horst.
And I'd like to add my kudos to this work as well. I wondered if you had broken down the vacancies by a subject matter or anything like that. I didn't see any of that in here, but to see where our vacancies really are. And I also think the chart here is very revealing, because we talk about a lot about the gray, and it's pretty obvious that they're not as gray as we thought. There's a lot of new teacher switchings, as was mentioned before, we need to be focusing more on mentoring and staff development and, and making sure that, that they're prepared to go into the classroom in the first. But another thing I wanted to ask is how I noticed that you have broken down immediate recommendations and then have other.
Intermediate recommendations and then long term.
Those for one year, and then you've broken down for other years and long term. How did you determine that some in, in one place versus another?
Well, that's a good question. You, you know, when we got, so, so we talked about having the four meetings. The last two meetings were spent a lot with developing, honing, vetting recommendations, so there are ideas that never made it into the final report. And also, too, where would these ideas, where would these recommendations be optimally placed, given the particular urgency that, that may be surrounding this? Because, you know, there is, there is no magic wand to say, "Boom, we're going to make teaching, you know, a wonderful profession in Kansas." It's going to take some time. So, what can be the step one that we might implement immediately that would kind of get the ball rolling? And that was really the, the underlying rationale for the two, about this, from the State Board of Education. I mean, kind of the, the really macro kind of recommendation. But as you will see, we have, they cluster a lot in the immediate, you know, so we, we, when we saw, when we saw this, and when we saw the 2,000 fewer teacher ed majors, or the 2,300-plus few teacher ed majors over the last four years, those were really the two that said, you know, "We, we, we really need to be proactive."
That's, that trend is extremely concerning.
And one, one of the values of, of creating this committee is have, you know, eyes to continue to monitor that trend. Is it just a, you know, for example, the 2015, 2016 vacancy data? We only have that one year. So, will the 2016, 17 vacancy data, will that reinforce what we're thinking, the, the southwest and the Wichita and the Kansas City, Kansas, going to be, or will it show something different? So, so we see a lot of value, and I think that among the task force members, not everyone, but some, there is an interest in, in, like I said, this is, this is the first of what we hope to be an ongoing standing, developing understanding of teacher vacancies and supplies in Kansas.
And I guess my final question would be, we, dealing with students not going into the profession, are we seeing less students in post-secondary? Is, is there a percentage there that it's maybe not what it appears? Or, and my other question concerning that is, I have heard of students who started and want to be teachers, but their parents, and they also have selves, said, "Teachers aren't being respected. There's a lot of just unrest," I guess you could say, "within certain components of the profession." So, leave that, that study. So, did we talk to students to find out why they had left, or you just didn't have time to really reflect upon that because of the short time?
So, so our plates were overflowing for, for the three, four months that we worked on this, but these are all appropriate additional inquiries that, that we want to be making and need to be making. There's a lot of anecdotal evidence about, you know, parents not supporting their children's decision to become teachers, but we don't really have any kind of, and we've really not looked at it systematically. You know, Kansas, to its credit, has put a lot of, focused a lot of attention on post-secondary education. You know, if you, if you look at the patterns, you know, we, we have students now who graduate from, from high school with maybe a full year of community college credit, or, or dual credit, or AP credit, coming in to shorten the time that they're, that they're in a program, a degree program, or, you know, there's a gap year. They take a year off and they do something else, and then they come back. Technical education is, you know, is a very valid and valuable opportunity for, for students, so a number of them, if they're Wayne, you know, might want to pick a different, which is, you know, if they're going to be a teacher, we want them to be a teacher because they really want to be a teacher. So, so there are many different task, data task that, that need to, need to happen to address not only your questions, Ms. Horst, but the questions from the other board members.
Thank you.
Sally Cobble.
Thank you. I've got a couple of comments and then questions. First of all, I really appreciate this, and I represent the southwest portion of the state. And I just got back from representing, being the representative to this board, to education states, and one of the topics there was the teacher shortage nationwide. And your committee brought out the very thing that ECS brought out, and that is, number one, they had downed salaries nationwide. And if we are a state that ranks low in teacher salaries, that's just added a problem onto another. The other is the respect of teachers nationwide, and it doesn't, they, when you go to these conferences, they're not talking about just public education, but they're also talking about private, they're talking about charter, they're talking across the line. And so, it's about all teachers in that profession, and respect nationwide is down. And I'm not so sure that it doesn't come from parting that America is behind all of the other countries. Well, you know, yes, but we educate all children. And so, I'm not so sure that what we really need, I was, I was glad to see in here that we really need to talk about verbiage and how we talk about that profession, and that they're not just teachers. We got to get that word "just" out of there. So, your report really fell right into what I was hearing nationwide. Now, I'd like to concentrate more on southwest Kansas. One of their problems, southwest Kansas, and it's a problem not only with the profession of education, but it's also the beefpacking plants and everything else. They don't have the people to fill the jobs. If you look at that unemployment percentage in southwest Kansas is very low. Part of their problem is housing. So, this is, this has also gone into an economic development problem for these towns, and they're working very hard. Liberal lost two years ago, they lost two teacher families. They could have had four teachers. The week before school started, they still couldn't find a place to live. A developer has come in and has built apartments, that has helped, but we have teachers living with other senior teachers that are single because there's no place for them to live. And I think it would be interesting if the study went a little further on that. I've got several communities that the, the school board own property. They own rental property, so they have a place for the teachers. So, they're doing some very creative ways. I just don't, we know about it. Okay, you know about it if you work out there, but people assume things aren't being done when they are. Now, one of the things that I'd also like to know is, are our schools trying to recruit in the same old, are they doing the same thing? Somebody said, I, it might have been Steve Roberts, that if you keep doing things the same old way and getting the same old result. So, I, I really don't know. I know that some of the schools are recruiting heavily out of Michigan, and the Michigan teachers are awesome, and they're developing their own little cultural and community in Liberal and Dodge and in, I think I've missed one, Garden, out in that area. Now, the one thing, and you have to realize that sometimes I'm more blunt than I should be, but I don't know how else to say this. In your, in these recommendations of stakeholders, is there an area for higher ed?
Well, I, I think higher listed there.
Okay, under where?
You should see the Kansas Board of Regents. You should see the Association of Teacher Educators in Kansas.
Okay.
The Kansas Association of Colleges for Teacher Education.
This is a recommendation that I would like for you to look at and see that I could be way off base on, okay? We have an experience, experienced in southwest Kansas, the two plus two program. We are having great success, but it's mainly with private schools, because they're flexible. They can come in and they can meet the needs of our new vision. What does that student need to be successful? And they are more flexible around that than what we are experiencing by the state schools. We've had one state school come in, and they can't even offer the courses in a sequential pattern enough that somebody can get their degree in a timely manner. I don't know if this makes sense to you, but they can't, they can't offer it this semester, but they'll offer it. they can't offer it this semester, but they'll offer it next semester. Well, some of our two plus two people need to, need a different schedule. I would really like for higher ed to look into working with the two plus two in a more flexible manner to meet the needs of the students. And as we are changing the culture of education in the state, we would like higher ed along with that new change of culture. And that would help us immensely to where I think we all want to put the best possible teacher in the kids. I think we all have that goal. But if we can't get the flexibility for what the, to be, to get those licenses, then we're going to have to look at other alternatives. And I think that's going to be a big debate around this table if that has to happen. And, and that's not doing our students any service. The one last thing that I'd like to say is I was concerned when I heard our new director of the Economic Development talk about the quality of life in Kansas and not have schools listed in that. And somehow we have got to be a bigger factor in the economic development of Kansas. We have had so many businesses come to Kansas because of our quality of schools. And it's amazing out in western Kansas, they're really looking at that. And when they see those new facilities and when they see, they think, my gosh, you guys have got your priorities right. I think we're going to have to look at where our priority of education falls in the state of Kansas. And I think that could be something you guys could look at too. I think it might go along right along with the respect. That's all I have to say. I want to thank the committee very much. I think you did just exactly what our commissioner said. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to add to that. And I love the idea of keeping this going because quite frankly, I hate to make decisions on worth of data. I've been in the trouble for about five years now. So I'm, I'm glad the rest of the state's caught up with me. So thank you very much.
Kathy Bush?
Just a quick follow-up. On your teacher vacancies, I'm assuming out of those were special education.
I think for the, I think the vacancy report did not include teacher, did not include special ed?
I don't believe it did. I think we're just.
Well, every district I talked to, they've got lots of special ed vacancies. And so this maybe isn't you, but it's maybe for Randy, because the state board did vote to have special ed be a part of an undergraduate program. So where are we on those regs? I know we've, I've asked that before and they're supposed to come back to us.
I can answer that. You voted on the regs. The regs are enforced to allow that to happen. Right now, that's the committees that are still working on developing the standards around which those programs will be built that have not yet brought their, the standards forward.
Okay. So what's that timeline?
I just asked Catherine that. They've been working, obviously, for quite a while now. So we hope to, I'm hoping by fall.
Okay. Could we have a follow-up on that?
Sure.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report. Very thorough. My past life on a local school board, my first concern was that 500 that leave the profession that on that exit interview, I'm assuming that folks don't get out without completing that. So I'm sort of sent, giving this to the commissioner that I don't, I think that we ought to send something out because if they're not coming back, then there's no reason for them not to be honest and truthful. That's what a lot of times they just don't want to put down a leg of these things. And, but I think that's one place we could really do is for us to help find out why folks are, are leaving. And then my other thought was with the creation of this teacher retention committee. I thought initially you said center. I, I think that's great. And so I'm assuming again, that'll be something that have we discussed that, Mr. Scott yet? Mr. Myers? Dr. Myers?
We're recommending here, of course.
Okay, okay. Because, because we do need that because I had a family member that was going to be a teacher, teacher, teacher in college. And then all, her father talked her out of it because of the money thing. And so that is so true. You find that out so many times. Parents and family will talk someone out. But I do thank you. My last thing is looking at the task force members. And I know, was, I know, Dr., excuse me, Betty Allen, Arnold, excuse me. How many minority people were on, on this committee? Because.
I'm gonna say what, there was three or four, three or four, myself included.
Were they vocal?
Yes. I'm always vocal.
See, I knew that.
You know, my brother, so you know, we're vocal.
I almost didn't even mention it because I knew. Okay. That's, that's the main thing that I don't like it when people just get on committees and don't really speak up.
This was the value of this group because they came and contributed. I mean, it was, we had small groups, we broke into small groups. We had, of course, Mr. McNeese, Mr. Roberts came and observed. You know, we had small group, big group, small group. So there was, and we needed that because we were only having the four meetings.
And then within that, every time we met, we switched up the groups. It wasn't the same people time after time. We switched them up a little bit. So get them out of the comfort zone a little bit.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank you, Bishop, and hard work. And I'd like to caution everyone on a couple of points. First, this is a start. We'll continue. We've had some good recommendations for including others outside the educational community to be on, on the staff, on a part of the teams. But I'd like to question others. You can cherry pick this thing and, and, support your own opinions very well, or you can, or disregard other information. I really appreciate the fact that you've tried to go after data and, and, and identified the source of the data. That's very important. There's a lot to think about. I tell the board that we may be looking at this as a work session sometime in the future, especially as we move forward. There's a lot for us to digest in here and then to respond to as we move forward. So thank you very much. It's a great report. It's a great start. It's not a finish. It's not a finished product. And be careful of what you, to support your own opinions. Okay. Thank you. We're adjourned now into 1:30 for our afternoon session. Thank you.